You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
We call a meeting to work?
Okay, I'll make the motion. We accept the consent agenda. Oh, no, we're making a motion for the approve the minutes for the regular meeting on April 23rd.
Motion made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 I'll make a motion for a non-public meeting on April 23rd for one and two.
Motion made in seconded. Any further? All in favor say aye.
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 Can make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
The large consent agenda.
Smaller than I've seen.
Motion made in seconded. Any discussion? Any further? All in favor say aye. Aye. Public input. We'll have another opportunity you can't get yet. Anybody online here? Nominations.
I'll make the motion that we reappoint Larry Proto to the capital improvement program committee.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 I'll make the motion we reappoint Kathy Bergstrom to the economic development advisory committee.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye. I'll make the motion to reappoint Hannah Maynard as an alternate.
To the economic development advisory committee.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appointments. PTW Director Joan DeRusso. Start with paving.
Hi, George. How are you doing today?
Not too bad myself. So our annual paving contract went out. All states, as always, they look a little bitter on it, so we're recommending going with them. Getting to start work shortly. We put a clause in this year that the work had to be completed by October 31st. All states like saving us till the last because their plan is close by, so next day's warmer about each year. It keeps getting later and later. Just scale it back a little bit so we don't have to deal with any issues trying to pave the whole lot there.
Do you want to verify or confirm the roads of the planning I'm doing? I have the list from the CIP. I think it's accurate.
Yeah, I think it will be. You have a...
I had Talbot, Taff, Aldridge, Safford, and Oliver Hill.
Yes, and then the addition of the Caldwell Hill work, the paving of the Hill on Caldwell Hill, the gravel section.
That's in 377.
Yes, that is included in that. And then our gravel portion, our, the class five portion of Oliver Hill Road will be extended and paved, so there'll be no longer that short strip of gravel road on Oliver Hill. Currently working with Cold River because they use the section of Oliver Hill Road behind the airport. Mike and I have tried already with them as far as doing a property swap, which just makes sense for them and makes sense for us. But every time we bring it to them, they're all on board with it and they never follow through. So the plan is still hopefully, so a lot of people don't realize that road behind the airport, that Cold River runs their loaders and stocks and materials on that is the town road. The road that comes straight in, that the majority of the traffic to use off of 32 is actually Cold River's private road. So it just makes so much sense for them to fence that off, block off the road behind the post office. That would be their private road and then the road would continue straight down. But we need to get that on the ballot and like I said, we've gone from, I know former directors have, but we, recently they were all on board and they'll follow through. But I recently, with the paving, I've asked them to provide either some funds or some asphalt for the paving of that road. And they told me, good, I can't go make a road improvements. They run heavy equipment, loaders on it, so. So hopefully that'll come through, lower the cost, lower the allowance to pave something else.
You got no number from the US? You just told them that we'd like that little content.
Yeah, talked to them about that and their response was, how about we provide asphalt? I said, perfect.
Same as cash.
Yeah, they need to talk to the powers that be and get back to us, so I need to stay on top of Gary. So there are some qualifications. Sounds like they're open to it. If they're not open to it, I don't plan on, I plan on doing some patchwork there, but not completely restoring that road if they're running heavy equipment on it. But hopefully this can be a springboard to get that switch to go through, the property switch to go through. It makes sense. I can't remember, potentially lead to a couple of other buildable house lots, I think. Because there's some land right out on the side of Cold River's private road that you have no access to. So it just makes sense on all levels.
I'm not sure on all the roads, but you mentioned the gravel roads. Are we gonna do some of the gravel part of the roads that we grade every year now? Are we eliminating some of the grading work now?
We're trying to. The roads that are, for example, that Oliver Hill Road is a real short section of road. It's difficult to grade because you just don't have the room. And it's a hill, so it's prone to washing. So that one is one that's being eliminated this year by being paved. And then there's a very short section of Aldridge Road. You get 15 feet wide. It's widest point. There are three houses on it. It's approximately, I can't remember the exact number. It's approximately 1200 feet long at that. It is problematic to plow. It's problematic to grade, so we're...
It's gonna save us money in the long run by doing this, so you don't have to maintain these gravel roads.
Yes and no. Then it leads to other maintenance down the road. So you're out of, within 10 years, the asphalt road needs some type of maintenance. A road like that's not gonna see heavy trucks. It's not gonna really have a lot of traffic on it, so you make it some more out of it. But I think it definitely cuts down on the problematic erosion and the maintenance. I've never looked at the total cost of grading versus how long do you have to replace the road. But the, but those short ones that are problematic in favor of paving.
No, all I was getting to is hope someday we don't have graded roads and you don't have to have that big expensive grader.
We use it for dipping because it's able to travel on the road and reach in with the blades.
Oh, okay.
Pull stuff out and then load it up and we'll load it.
Oh, so you use it for other things.
We do, but it'd be something that you could look at rentals for.
If we had just that.
The other thing, we don't get the winters like we used to, but let's see if it's cyclical. When you get real bad ice and heavy snow pack, the grade is about the only thing that can scrape up the heavy ice and snow when it's real cold. But we haven't seen a winter like that in years.
Have you considered or taken a look at extending Oliver Hill Road to complete it up to Woodland Heights?
I have not.
Is it anything worth considering?
I think there's, I think the potential is there.
Do you know off the top of your head how far?
I don't.
To the half mile?
It's a pretty, it's a pretty good stretch, I think.
Just when you mention house lots, there's...
Yeah, there's a lot of land up there. I know there has been talk, and alas, a cell company was doing something with a cell tower and they were looking for access up there. I've never walked it, so I don't know really what the land is like up there, but...
The class six portion is better than the class five dirt portion anyway. Those people put a lot of money into that road and it washed out.
It washed out 2021. I felt bad for the one that was up at the top. It was a spend close to $20,000 the year before. And then those 21 floods, it was devastating and feeble. Wouldn't do anything for private property owners. But I think that now it'd be fairly easy to upgrade that section of road.
The mitigation that they had on the Route 12 side where there's a lot of water. Care to make a motion on that?
Sure, I'll make the motion as drafted here.
Second.
Okay, I've made the motion to authorize the expenditure of up to $377,800 for the 2024 road improvement project with $30,000 from the John Flatley Company and remaining funds from the 2024 asphalt budget and feeble costs. And authorize the town administrator to sign contract documents with all state asphalt or outstate construction. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. Devin Thompson, bridge?
Yes, a big one. As you know, I've been working with a couple contractors and engineer as far as the maintenance that's needed to that bridge. So I have a Como Coal from Cold River Bridge. They are able to get the joint and they kind of have it done this year between July and August. Hanson Bridge was the other bridge company that we've used them before and we were working with them. I've got somewhat of an informal quote from them, but they can't get the joint and they can't give me a price on how much the joint is. Initially, they provided a price of approximately $265,000, which has recently said they wouldn't be able to get to it this year. And they said it could be an additional $30,000 to $75,000 for the joint, using a different company. As the engineer explained to me, it's not preparing, really put it out in a form of big need engineering. And the engineer told me there's no reason to do that. He highly recommends Cold River Bridges. Specialize. They do a lot of work for the state of New Hampshire. They do a lot of work for the law state of New Hampshire. I talked to them about them and they said they would definitely give you a decent product. So they are able to do that. You can see the formal quote they provided. The sum for the decking, the membrane is $155,000, $177,000. The only thing, they won't know what needs concrete work until they get the asphalt and the membrane on. That's, if there's concrete work that needs to be repaired, there's gonna be an additional cost to it, but there's no way to tell until they strip the asphalt and inspect that concrete. But their plan is if they were awarded this contract, they would move right in as soon as the school shuts down and start working on the decking portion and they would have it prepped for the joint. The joint would come sometime in August and they see no issue with getting the work completed before the school opens back up. And you'll see the second cost of $133,944,000 for the, for the joint set. That's the installment and the cost of that expansion joint. Started preparation for it. Talked with the fire department. They decided that they didn't feel comfortable leaving fire trucks outside at night. During daytime, they would stage some fire trucks on the other side of the river, but they're more than comfortable that they can, through mutual aid, have adequate responses and they didn't see a need to risk equipment out at night. I've spoken with the campground. They're okay with it. They understand it needs to be done. And they realize there are other ways to get into, to get into the campground. DOT is on board with it and I recommend we move forward with Cold River Bridges and do it this year. And we'll start messaging to the public sooner than later once we know that this is going to happen. Like I said, this is not a question of if this work needs to be done. It needs to be done sooner than later. We could hold off a little bit, but where we have the funds for it now and Cold River is available to do it, I recommend we move forward.
Best case, if there's no concrete work necessary, how long will it be totally shut down?
Minimum, if anything went perfect, he thinks it could be done in six weeks. He thinks that August he could have the joint. He's gonna order the joint this week if we decide to move forward. Maybe get it a little sooner, but he thought around six weeks. He figured if we had the joint, the first week of August, he could have it back open the second, at the end of the second week of August. And like I discussed before, we wanted to do one-way traffic and do a half at a time. They, the bridge companies tell you double the cost. I know it's an inconvenience, but I can't see doubling the cost.
It helps that we don't have the money for double the cost.
That's a good point, too.
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we, I'll make the motion that we do it as red.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to authorize expenditure of up to $310,000 for Devon Thompson Bridge maintenance project with $71,768.38 from House Bill 2, $238,231.62 from the town bridge's capital reserve fund, and authorize the town administrator to enter into contract documents with Cold River Bridges LLC. Anything further?
Just one, just one thing. I just wanted to mention, we talked about it a little bit the last time you were here, but there is the risk depending on what we find when we...
Concrete, concrete, yeah.
Where's that money coming from?
Hopefully it's within this additional, we got about $8,000 or...
How much damage could be done? Do we know that?
The only concern I have is back when we paved Devon Thompson at the South Winchester project, we weren't ready to move forward with the bridge. And I had the paving company mill it and put a fresh thin top coat on it to protect it. Especially protecting it from the salt and everything getting down into the concrete and steel. And there's two spots where water's coming up. And I don't know how it's getting in between somewhere. I don't know if the concrete's sweating. It's hard to say. Underneath it looks pretty decent. We've inspected underneath. But there's two areas that I say to myself, why, water, like shortly after it was paved, pothole reform. And if you drive across it, you can see as you're heading towards Route 10 on the right side of the bridge, about halfway down, you'll see a pothole and water comes in. That's my only concern. But when both bridge companies looked at it, they said the concrete looked pretty good from, from below. They actually, once they get the asphalt up, they literally take a chain, they drag a chain, and they can hear a hollow if there's broken up stuff underneath. I think that's essentially what the test is for. But like I said, these guys, that's all they do. They specialize in that. If there's no concrete that needs to be done, they simply put the membrane on and move forward. If the concrete is weak, they either jackhammer it out, get deep enough where they can get into the rebar and they form up areas and they patch concrete. So I think that even if we do have to do some concrete work from what we see underneath, it shouldn't be too, too substantial.
I'm trying to sidetrack. I just want to make sure.
No, that's fine.
Get into detail about that one.
All right, motion made in seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So I'm gonna recuse myself from the next one. Okay. Crescent Bridge decking and damage repair.
Yes.
Because he hit the bridge.
And the bridge got hit again recently. It gets hit on a regular basis.
And they caught him.
Yes. I was encouraging some conduct after an accident.
Oh, did that recently just have one I saw?
The Swansie side or the town side of it, that's recent. The other side of it's old.
Oh, I figured the same took, it hit the front.
Took out the back. It's been hit probably in the last nine months, probably hit five times.
Now, he didn't go all the way through.
No, he didn't. Yeah. I don't know, I haven't heard of, like, it was totally laughing with the report what was happening.
Facebook police there. He was talking to the police.
But I think that maybe at the bridge, yeah, I didn't hear, like I said, I heard bits and pieces of, but regardless. It's, it's been, I know I get criticized sometimes because when it gets hit, I don't run right out, stop what we're doing and fix it. And I literally don't because it gets hit on such a regular basis. And...
So as I was looking at the face of it, that's just kind of just the thin boards that they rip off. But in the main, big carrying beams that run top, they're higher than that face.
Yeah, structurally.
So sometimes they can hit that face and make it through, and then they hit them near the ramp. Because when I stopped to look at it all over the other day, I realized that that's, that face comes down lower than our main beam.
Yeah, and as they're leaving, sometimes when they turn to the right, they get over and out where they catch the corn.
So why do we have that face so far down? Is that to protect the main beams?
And it's just the way it was designed.
Just the way it was designed?
Yeah.
Because the face drops down quite a bit though, other than the main beams at the top. You know, it's that, the big difference.
We, we literally have people drive up. They know what they're doing is wrong. They get out, they look and see them like, okay, I think I can make it across. It's crazy. And, and like road signs about the bridge is not gonna stop, not gonna...
We put hinges on?
I could stop, or I could put a big eye beam in front of it, about 20, 20 feet in front of it. Like you see somewhere it stops, but it obviously would not be very...
Helpless to look at. But what about, is that box trucks have a do with this? The box trucks?
You've got box trucks. You have fifth-wheel campers.
Oh, fifth-wheel campers.
They get hit, I mean...
Nothing in tow. I mean, you know, nothing in tow is allowed through, so.
Why, nothing in tow is allowed?
We had a tree spade. They got the Carl Road Bridge one time, you know, with the tree.
It was eye-opening to me when we were lengthening the sidewalk project where I spent a lot of time down there working and just to see the craziness. Like I said, people pull up, get out, look, and they're like, I can make it across.
They hit it. I mean, they don't just try to nudge up to it, then look, you know, let's get close and see if I'm gonna make it. They just hit it.
And something about, probably jinxed myself, something about that one, much worse than the...
Than the rest.
Yeah.
But is that the one putting cameras on?
I like to put cameras on all of them with a lot of houses.
Okay. But we have, I thought that did pass.
Working its way through.
I could sort of send it right now.
Alan from ID is looking at camera options for it, so.
What is the argument about cameras that why you can't have them? What privacy? Does somebody have?
That's why the state of New Hampshire doesn't have plate readers. Their, the law does not allow for the, to hold any of the data. Like a lot of the states capture registration information and they keep the data for like 30 days or so. New Hampshire won't allow it, so it kind of makes plate readers essentially...
Just go free or die.
I guess, huh?
And how's this process?
No, because I was pulled over, my father passed away when I was driving his car and something happened. And I was pulled over by a state trooper and I was somewhere in Mass. I'm like, how did you even know? And he says, I read the plate. I come right up. Look, we don't have that in here. Like you can't tell if a state trooper is in town, like if someone was caught for drinking and driving and they, they were, and the car was going down the road, you can read that, right? That, that you know he's an offender?
I can run the plate on my car if I have an articulate suspicion from, from the cruiser, but as far as any devices that just automatically...
You don't have any, sir.
For example, if we, there have been times where homicide suspect, and we think the person's driving down 91 South. We'll contact Mass State Police. They'll put a cruiser on the side of the road to do nothing, but just sit there and read plates. That automatically does it and it puts up an alert if it catches that plate you're looking for.
Wow. Interesting.
So that bridge needs decking of a different type of wood. And it's, if you drive across or you stop and sit out and look, you watch the boards are coming up, they're reaching...
Yeah, that's...
I am no woodwork expert, so I went to Hanson Bridge again, looked at this. GDS Landmark Group, Grayson Smith looked at it. They're white oak planks. White oak is extremely expensive. It's approximately 2,650 square feet of white oak needed to do the decking on the bridge. And it ranges anywhere from $30,000 to $80,000 depending on the quality of the, of the white oak. I received a, or estimate from GDS Landmark for him to do the work at $47,620. The lumber, the material itself is somewhere in the $30,000 range. The reason why I had Grayson give me an estimate to do all the work is it needs to be done sooner than later. The crew has done this type of work in the past, but they're gonna be much slower than having a contractor come in and we wouldn't be able to get to it until probably late after paving season. And the other thing I was considering is the cost of the material, how expensive it is as far as waste and such. I think it made sense just to move forward with a contractor. Hanson Bridge gave me an estimate, they gave me two estimates, nothing formal. It was, it was just via phone. They were in the $48,000 range. Then they also had one option that they were recommending at $80,000 and I, with a higher-end oak, and I couldn't see doing that. And then figured while the bridge was shut down, we'd have Grayson make the repairs to it while he was there. Once again, in preparation for this, I talked to DOT. This would like, we would do this before Devon Thompson is shut down, so we don't have two major bridges shut down at the same time. Grayson's confident he can get to this in June. He can get to it as soon as he can get the lumber, about a week's worth of work. They would, the bridge would be shut down during the day, opened up at night. The other thing I need to look at while we have a shutdown, there are two large pine trees on the town side of the bridge that are leaning toward the bridge. It would be a perfect time to take down those pine trees so they don't come down on top of the bridge. I need, DOT is completely on board with it. I just need to check with the property owner there. I'm sure it wouldn't be an issue, but that would be the ideal time to have those trees removed. That money would just come from the operational budget for tree removal from DPW. So like I said, I'm not saying we couldn't do it with the tire crew, but it would be much later in the year. The bridge would likely be shut down for more time. And as you drive, you can go down there and watch right now. The boards are popping up on it. It needs to be done.
Is that all original? Have we ever done this before?
No, no, I don't think so.
Have we ever done any decking before?
Yes, the one down here for the deck.
And that's a different company than we're using now?
This one down here was the one that the DPW crew did. And then Hanson Bridge, when he was looking at that bridge, he says he's, he has done work to it. He did a full inspection of it when he was looking at the decking. He said everything looks great. It's just, you need to replace the old floors. The other bridges, the decking, the decking are in better, a lot better condition. Certain later, this one is probably gonna be the likely next one that needs to be...
So what is the lifespan on these deckings? 10 years, 15?
I think it's more than that. It's more than 20s.
20s? Oh, so we'll get good 20 years out of this one? I'll make that motion that we, as red?
I'll second. Motion made in seconded to authorize expenditure of up to $50,000 for the Crescent Bridge, redecking and repairs from the town covered bridges capital reserve fund, and authorize the town administrator enter into contract documents with GDS Landmark Group. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. You're recused. Moonshot.
I'll see you, Mark. Yes.
Full of back-to-back.
What's that?
Whisper. I mean razor-thin margin between the two.
It was close.
They are. The one, the one thing with Hoyland Tanner is they made it clear that their schedule, it would be at the end of the year before they can get to it. The other positive with Underwood Engineers, they've already done a planning study for it, for the sewer commission. Not, there wasn't much action on what the, what their initial study was, so they can jump in off of that, build off of that and move forward. The timeline work with Steve Clifton, he's been very, very helpful doing, doing stuff without charging us. How, how we've been working on this pilot program and the, and the transition away from sewer commission. So he has been very helpful, but I don't think it's realistic to consider Hoyland Tanner just due to the fact of their availability. They made it clear that it was to be something at the end of the year.
Yeah, and the other benefit to Underwood is their work on the water company where they, you know, they're looking at, they're looking at the utilities, so I think it makes sense to keep those functions together. So it's making an RFQ qualification-based selection, so the expectation is it'll be up to the $100,000 forgivable on. So we would just be looking for the board to authorize the award and negotiation, which I don't know how that's gonna go, but...
I gotta say, I'm a little lost on this one. I don't, I'm not understanding the whole thing.
They're recommending Underwood Engineers for the...
For what?
Engineering.
Oh, okay.
For the grant that was awarded to the town.
Okay.
For the wastewater facility number...
I get it. One time, I get it. Okay, I'm sorry.
To think they're gonna look at...
Just wanna make sure what I'm making a motion for, that I understand it.
They're gonna look at, we discussed, they're gonna look at a couple of things. They'll look at, the big concern right now with the sewer plant is not being able to treat the phosphorus. There's approximately 80,000 gallons per day that they treat phosphorus. They can't do anymore. The plant is able to take approximately another 40,000 gallons of flow, but you can't treat the phosphorus. So that's the number one short-term issue is to determine how they're gonna fix that, resolve that issue without creating other issues, because often when they use something like this pack, it creates aluminum and that makes it so they go over and another.
We're right up there on that, or that one.
Yeah, there's no, we can't take anybody else on right now.
Yeah, I gotta explain that to them.
That will be the number one priority. Then it's gonna be in a look at, an update to the plant, what it's gonna need. The engineers, when you're doing this type of planning, where are you gonna be out of 20 years? What your goal is gonna be. And then we had those discussions today. So you see some of these communities spending 20, 30 million dollars on these sewer plants. Then you have to look at, is it part of this planning study, will be, is it more feasible just to simply pipe it into the Keen, which we already, the Keen facility, which we already own a large volume of flow. Right now, Keen could take West Swansea and then West Swansea and still, we could still provide more.
Well, if we did that, would we do away with the downtown? We'd do away with that. We'd just, up, up to the town.
Yeah, everything would go that way. So today, it could cost approximately, today's cost would approximately, cost approximately $10 million to do just sewer across there. But if you were gonna tear up a road, you might as well run water line while you're doing it. That's gonna be the goal of the town. And he'd really likely be the road to go on. But like I said, without water, I don't know how much the water would, but just to do sewer alone, you're looking at about $10 million. But then, there's no more except for the cost of, of the capital improvement stuff at the Keen plant. You could easily, like I say, what, Milford?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm starting to remember. I think there's Milford and Epping. They were talking about 20-plus million to upgrade.
Basically shut down.
Yeah. So hopefully this planning study will come forward with some, some realistic expectations. Part of the study can be used. They, Steve Clifton from Underwood explained today, part of the money from this grant study can be used to try some different chemicals, additional testing to see if there's a way they can treat this pack in a different manner. But obviously, a good portion of it needs to be used for the other stuff.
We need to motion to...
If you want, for Underwood?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
And motion to select Underwood Engineers to perform wastewater treatment plant facility study authorizing expenditure of up to $100,000 from the 2024 warrant article number six, and authorize the town administrator to enter into contract documents and submit related loan documents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Amy Adams?
I'm gonna stay for the fire pond since you've discussed that with...
Yeah, yeah, I can stay for that.
Going right into new business. Going right into new business, requesting expenditure AeroPress Fire Pond Hydro.
So much of the work, including the culvert under Aero, AeroPress Drive, was replaced last year using FEMA funds after the first July flooding, before the big one on July ninth. So we had fifty thousand in the capital improvement plan, fortunately, we're only gonna need to use just over fifteen thousand, basically the only expense of actual, um, dry hydrant. So Joe reviewed that, and Gordon Services, our idea with Charlie Johnson at DuBois and King was to put, basically to lump it together with Upper Wilson Pond Dam. We didn't include it in the bid, but the idea was to use the same vendor, so use Joe, Joe Matherlin. That's, that's where we got the quote that's listed in here.
Yeah, and they would likely move, they're waiting on, for the Upper Wilson Pond Dam, they're just waiting on their standard approval from DES to start that work. They would likely move in soon and then later, that's a pretty quick project. They're gonna use some of the equipment they have for copper dams and so forth, that they're gonna use in the water, to do the same over there, the fire pond, and so it will be done relatively quick.
Wait, did I see what the fire pond is? Did I, did you show me that? I don't, is it on the other side of the road from the dam?
Best twinkle tunnel?
It's, no, that's nowhere near that.
Oh, so I haven't even, I'm not familiar with this.
We're just on one of our tours, and we'll think, get right past you.
Yeah.
He canceled, he canceled the trip this week, so.
So what do we do? We're putting a, a piping under the fire pond, is that what?
Into the fire pond, so the fire.
Is it one there, or this, no, no?
Nothing.
Oh, so we're gonna just, okay.
Last year, the floods wiped the road out, FEMA paid to replace the culvert and, and fix the road. And now, as you turn into AeroPress, twinkle tunnels on your right, you go up the waters on the left, there's gonna be a, a dry hydrant, an area for fire trucks to pour into the dirt.
You did go there, I think.
I think we might have gone there.
We did go up there, there was, I remember the water now, okay. I, I, I'm just trying to picture it in my head.
Remember your ice cream, Tom? He's a support man.
All right. I'll make that motion that we.
Second. And motion made and seconded to authorize the expenditure of up to seventeen thousand dollars for the AeroPress Fire Pond project from the Fire Pond Expendable Trust Fund, and authorize the town administrator to sign contract documents with Ward and Services. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it.
And the only other guy for updates right now, we're working with contractors, our annual springtime. The catch basin trucks are down this week cleaning out catch basins. The street sweepers have been coming in when they're available to clean up roads, sand areas. We have almost every dirt road graded at, at this point. We're all working on some, uh, some culvert replacement. And as soon as we get everything graded and a couple problematic culverts replaced, the plan is to start looking up on Cal, Caldwell Hill and that wide, and preparing for the paving.
Oh, you do all the prep up on Caldwell Hill?
Yeah.
So that's it, just quite a bit of money, right?
Yes, and that's part of the reason not able to get to some of the other stuff. Like I said, we wouldn't be able to take on the bridge until late fall.
And that's what, bringing material up, widening it, doing the edges?
Cutting trees and drainage pipes. And some of these roads, we need to go in and take a closer look. We're gonna, I know we have to change a pipe on all regular road before the paving company comes in. So before they go on paving, we wanna make sure if you have any problem, culvert's a change, so.
Nice.
Lot going on.
Yeah.
He sure looked good when I was out there. Seemed to weather the winter pretty well.
Yeah, yeah, held up pretty well, all the gravel that went in after the floods. And today, we changed our, an old crushed berry culvert on West Shore to kind of help with some of the years, some of the problem areas we've had over there, and some of the complaints as far as water discharge, and one of the pipes is out, and then hopefully alleviate some of those concerns.
The lake pole, I'm calling it a lake pole, rotted and fell over on Coal Rivers Road by neighbor's store. Is the airport responsible for that, do you think? It's been down for a couple of years, I think, now.
I haven't seen it. Is it something to do with the airport as far as lighting?
It's just a big telephone pole with a red leaf on top. And it rotted and fell over, and it's just been sitting there, I think. It's not our road, but somebody.
I'll bring the key's attention if it has anything to do with the airport. Hopefully sooner than later.
A wood one, so? And it actually rotted?
Oh, yeah.
That's gotta be pretty old.
I'll, I'll bring the key's attention, see if it is something that they're responsible for.
Thank you. You want anything to do with Route thirty-two?
The next.
You're gonna give that for DOT?
The next part, one third. Down.
Part of the bridge project?
Yeah.
Um, so we had a meeting with Fire Department and DOT and DuBois and King last week, or the week before, I think. So basically, if we lump it in with their project, we just need to do the engineering and provide the costs for that. So we're looking for up to six thousand dollars from the Fire Pond Expendable Trust Fund to authorize Charlie to work on the engineering for that one.
Sounds good.
So this is over by, uh, Route thirty-two, by Lake Lake Road, kind of goes down, and there's a bridge down there. So they're gonna look at realigning the road a little bit, placing the bridge, and we're gonna try to put it up.
Some engineer money to, to get it, to look at it, so we gotta do.
For the fire.
Yeah, the big thing with the engineering is DES as well, land restrictions are so difficult, you need to, you need to announce that, and they need to put the hydro study in and so forth to get the approval to do it. The work itself is a fraction, and it's all planned and it'll get there.
But because we're kind of piggybacking off their project, hopefully we can get incorporated with their weapons permits, but not through our own separate.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded to authorize the expenditure of the six thousand dollars for the Mark and Bro, Dry Hydrant project from the Fire Pond Expendable Trust Fund, and authorize the town administrator to sign contract documents with DuBois and King. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it.
We can talk about the open house. I did not. Okay, you want us to browse on that idea?
Thanks, Joe.
Well, Joe, good job.
And you know what you're asking for, is that people complaining about the water level? So we've created a policy that Fish and Game and DES were consulted. Fish and Game doesn't quite like how much we draw down, but as far, but as far as the dates go, DES and Fish and Game is part of.
Well, that's my answer, because.
It's still all over the state.
That's great, because now I can say, you know, Fish and Game was involved there, you know, 'cause I've been up there, I don't know where, where geese are laying eggs out there anyways. It must be, she's climbing in that machete in the back corner over there, and Jesus bells.
They should talk to the president.
Oh, they weren't floating, Joe.
I haven't seen any geese down there. I've seen them on other.
So all you got is a half a board left, and that's done? And when you've dropped that?
Probably tomorrow. I gotta see what it's doing. Just gonna make sure it doesn't get up too high. Something's off this year. It's not coming back up like it usually does. We had less boards than last year, and the water level was high.
Yep. And that's gonna state, even though the.
There's not much water coming over the Upper Wilson Pond.
No, there's not much flowing. We're gonna check the diversion dam, see if it's not plugged up tomorrow, but they're not flowing out hardly any water, even like thirty-five cubic feet per second. Sometimes they're as high as, in the spring, they're as high as three, four hundred.
They're not releasing much out of, out of work here.
Saw that, that moving up.
We, and we, we, they feel that it's not gonna affect the height when we work in the dam up above.
No, they're gonna be pumping water over when they, when they dam it up, so there's still gonna be water coming over. But there are times shortly after spring that there's no water coming.
No water.
Except you do get some water from some of the other area that doesn't come down from the upper branch.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that part in, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Joe. Nice job, Joe.
Thanks.
Police Department Incentive Program update.
So I knew it, it's been a while. I knew it was when Tom DeAngelo was here, but I was surprised that it was almost, almost six years to the month ago that we initially adopted this. So lots, lots changed since then, so. We've been fortunate that I guess we haven't really had to look at it, but the chief and I reviewed the current incentive policy and developed the recommendations that you see in the list. The ten thousand dollar hiring incentive is comparable to Keane and other agencies we found, places like Lebanon are offering thirty thousand. So there's a pretty lengthy article in the union leader which I scanned and sent to you. I didn't want to put it in the packet, because I thought their, their click police might not have, he'd see us putting it on their website, but just a lengthy thing about the whole recruitment issue, which I know you're all familiar with. So in addition to updating some of that, we added some additional incentives for our existing officers. If they, you know, they're able to recruit someone and they succeed, helping them share some of the benefit a little bit, so I think that might be a nice touch. So we also added, the incentives were a little unclear on how part timers were treated, so we made that a little more clear. And we added incentive for uncertified, because even that's hard to come by now, so. In terms of cost implications, for better or worse, usually if, you know, we're gonna be handing out incentives, it's because we have vacant positions. So it can be absorbable, then if we pay out a lot of them in one year, it might be a little tight on the budget, but I think it's something we can handle.
How long for the ten thousand?
Three years.
CIPC wanna open up an account for incentive program? Start checking some of.
Yeah, I'll let you tell, I'll let you tell, Steve, you're thinking about another account. The trustee, the CID might be a given, but the trustees are just ones with a reminder to someone.
Well, if you haven't looked at it in six years, it's due that we did, and, and it's, we're in trouble with the police department. We gotta, we gotta do something to, to get people to sign up. I'll make a motion to accept it, yeah?
Second. Motion made to approve the Police Department Incentive Program as proposed. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Ayes? The ayes have it. Job description update, assessing coordinator. How long ago was that updated?
Uh, eight years, seven, eight years, just seven years. So usually we do them, as you know, when, when people leave. Fortunately, that's not the case this time. But we're not trying to just work progressively, do one or two a month, so you'll probably be seeing more of them. So we're just trying to kind of more accurately align some of the duties that were listed in here, kind of absorbed by other staff, and then some things that, uh, this position, I may make sense to be involved with, weren't reflected. So, uh, Christine's helping out with grants and, uh, some kind of basic technology stuff in the office. So I think it's good to have it as a main person. When Julius was the land use coordinator, he was kind of the point person for initial, um, issues and kind of going back and forth with the IT company. It avoids town clerk calls, and then she says something to me, and then I call, and then we have three people calling about the same thing. That doesn't help it get fixed. So I think it's helpful to kind of have one, uh, point person. So that's just a little bit of the kind of background on where this came from.
Do you make the motion to that? I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the assessing coordinator job description as proposed. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it. Old business. Are you getting into open house yet?
I gotta talk to the girl, she has got, uh, help this one.
Which year?
This month, I said.
They have a flat stone grill every year, thirty-six inch.
Will you do the cooking, or?
He wants. Bummed down.
I just bought one of those, Sly.
The way to go.
Never tried it, it's brand new, sitting on my dock. Steve was from Davis Oil, went and auctioned it up, and the person didn't want it, came to me and I bought it from them. I hope it works good.
Works great.
It does. It's a flat top, thirty-six inch.
Just don't use soap on it.
Don't use soap?
It's cast iron.
Is it cast iron?
Well, it's not cast, but it's thick steel.
Is it coated?
No.
Oh. So you can use a grill screen on it? Oh, that's nice.
Anything for us? We're just talking grills.
Just got payments.
Yeah, we didn't mean to change the subject.
All right. Any other non-public sessions? Or, I'm sorry, non-public. Any other public input? Nothing? Non-public sessions?
Appreciate you coming and joining us.
You want to do a.
Appreciate you coming and joining us. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, James.
Would you like to go with us?
Non-public address.
I still want a few things.
I'm hoping to, you're on the, on the edge.
Yeah.